Is five thirty, I'll call our councilman to order. We do have a forum? Okay. I'll leave the pledge allegiance if we all stand please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the kings and princes, one nation under God, one individual.
I'll start off by saying it's good to be back. I want to say thank you to the EMS for giving me the care after my stroke. Immediately, I was in Fort Worth in how long, even forty-five minutes, I think I was in the hospital in Fort Worth. And I appreciate them. That's the second time they've had to bail, literally bail me out. I appreciate them doing that. Thank you. I know there's another council member up here who's been through the same experience and we appreciate you guys a lot. Thank you very much. Tonight, our invocation will be led by Kirk Claxo. He's the Steadenville Minister Alliance, I think called President, aren't you?
Yes, President Minister Alliance.
There you go, Mr. President.
Oh, Mr. President, like it. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for your many blessings to us. I have to say, Lord, I don't know why, but I was surprised to see Doug here tonight. We just thank you for healing his body. We pray you for healing his mind and we pray, God, that you would continue to help our mayor to get full recovery and be strong and vibrant again, Lord. We thank you so much. There's probably a hundred stories that each one of us could tell about how good you've been to us and so we just want to thank you. We thank you for what you've done in our city and our county. We ask, Lord, that you would continue to protect us, help us to honor you in the way we live. Help us, Lord, to make good decisions for you. And your word says that without a vision, the people will perish. And so I just pray that you would give our council and city staff and county vision on what this city should look like. And I pray, God, that you would help us to follow everything you tell us to do. We love you, Lord Jesus, in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you very much. And to all those people who sent flowers, text messages, I think it was Adam up today, I think we're in, I was in like five or six hundred, approximately six hundred people reaching out. I appreciate that very much. Thank you for all your help and care. We had a couple of presentations. I can come down one time and read them down here because if I don't, I may fall and way back up and down like I normally almost do without, before this goes.
Without handicap, that's right.
Mike, come on up here. The right one up here, it's on. It looked like he brought all of us. Now, none of these council members deserve any of those.
Mayor, you can't take all those home.
Now, you're, I apologize for the way my signature looks. I'm in writing practices now. Get over here a little bit. Mike, this Mr. Parsons here, Micah, I asked him, I said, how'd you learn how to do this? All he talked to, said is bomber or something, but he just, she just said, wait just three minutes, let it do it once. You're doing it. It's pretty special. And I saw it on television, on the newspaper and the really size. So let me read your proclamation. Whereas Micah Parsons, a talented and hardworking twelve-year-old from Steadenville, Texas, has achieved great success in the culinary world. Whereas Micah recently competed on, competed on the Food Network's Kid Baking Championship. The champion, man, that's pretty cool. We're called city champions, right? Here's another one right here. Where after ten weeks of intense competition, he was crowned the winner of season thirteen and on March third, twenty twenty-five. And whereas Micah's passion for baking began at a young age, inspired by watching previous sessions of baking, the kids baking championship, and a deep love for creating delicious treats for family and friends. Whereas in addition to his culinary talents, Micah is an accomplished guitarist. All right. Enjoys helping his father at work. Work at the clinic. And is an active participant in First Baptist Church Bible Drill and Eretown County Four-H Robotics. Wow, that's pretty cool too. Which is the coolest? I think that's a good, that's a good choice. Whereas Micah exemplifies the values of dedication, creativity, and community spirit and serves as a positive and positive role model for young people in our community. Therefore, now therefore I, Dex, the mayor of Steadenville, Texas, do hereby proclaim April first, as this, this is not a joke, April first, as Micah Parsons' day in the city of Steadenville in honor of outstanding achievements as winner of the Kids Baking Championship season thirteen and his bright future. Let this day be served as a reminder of the incredible talent and potential that exists within our youth. As and as a celebration of Micah's hard work, creativity, and inspiring work, I design this first day of April, twenty twenty-five, honor by hand. There you go. Congratulations. I get some real pictures. I'm just going out here so I don't fall. Hang on.
Good job. Congratulations. Okay.
I have another presentation. It's Lauren. She's the executive director of Croft Timber Family Services. Lauren is the, she also is Children's Advocate Center, Lauren, I'm going to. I'm going to let you read this. This time just might say you're a lot of people free. Obviously, my reading is, I like my standing.
Proclamation for Stop the Silence. Whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week was established in nineteen eighty-one by President Ronald Reagan as part of an effort to bring attention and support to victims of crime and is being observed the week of April sixth through twelfth, twenty twenty-five with the theme of kinship, connecting, healing, and advocating for all victims to recognize victims of crime in the United States. National Crime Victims Rights Week provides an opportunity to commit to ensuring that accessible, appropriate, and trauma-informed services are offered to all victims of crime. And whereas in April nineteen eighty-three, April was designated National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And our community acknowledges that we must work together as a community to increase awareness of our child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, nurturing environment. And whereas National Sexual Assault Awareness Month was first nationally recognized in April of two thousand and one as an effort to bring awareness about sexual assault and educate communities and individuals on prevention of sexual violence. And whereas our community has dedicated individuals and organizations to work daily to counter the problems and provide resources to victims of violent crimes, child abuse, and neglect and sexual assault. And whereas since the passage of the Victims of Crime Act in nineteen eighty-four and through the dedicated work of advocates, lawmakers, and victim services providers, there is a growing rate of services and resources available to victims and their loved ones. And whereas Stop the Silence has been created to combine awareness of these causes in Eretown County. Now therefore reaffirming this, the city of Steadenville, city of Dublin, Eretown County, and Charlton State University commit to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crimes throughout the year and do hereby proclaim the week of April sixth through twelfth, twenty twenty-five as Crime Victims Rights Week.
We'll get Dr. Hurley and Judge Huppinby and David Leatherwood, Mayor of Dublin, will sign this. We'll get it presented. Have they been downtown on what date?
Yes. Our community rally is Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, six o'clock downtown here at the Eretown County Courthouse. We have child-friendly booths that educate the community about the services offered in Eretown County and how to support victims of crime. We also have a ceremony led by the justice system here in the county. Alan Nash will give the welcome. The ministerial alliance will present an opening prayer. We'll do a flag presentation by the Charlton Corps of Cadets. Along with Chief Harris will be involved in the ceremony. All first responders will be involved. So it's a, it's a great way to educate.
Everybody will come. It's a good event to attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, can I slide you all over just a little bit to center you?
I want to make sure you get that in the picture.
I will definitely get that in the picture. Just get them all in there. Just a little bit more. Okay, I can do that. Okay, beautiful.
Thank you.
You can't have it back.
Thank you, sir.
Well, counsel, I am taking all these home tonight. There's not enough in here for y'all anyway, so. How long can I keep these in the, in the refrigerator? Next time we have general's discussion for the citizens, I have one person who'd like to speak is Stephen McKeven. Stephen, you'll get up in, you got three minutes and give your name and your address.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, on a night that we're recognizing some excellent youth citizens in our community, I think it's appropriate to discuss some other youth, some children in our community that have some potential to do great things. So I want to talk about first, just mainly about the use of the facilities at the park, specifically the baseball fields and in relation to travel baseball. And so first of all, I feel like I've kind of been designated as a group of the parents because I'm probably the only family that actually has a child playing in two different organizations. And so first of all, there's a, there's a real need for some better organization transparency and some consistency in the parks. Availability of fields, what's open, what's closed, what's reserved. One example, one of the main reasons I'm up here is my oldest son's team had, or had some practice. I was told by a park's employee, the field's open. If it's not locked and closed, go for it. That was later confirmed by another employee. And but a third employee came up and was yelling and screaming at eleven- and twelve-year-olds. It was completely inappropriate, upset the kids, and all of that stuff could have easily been avoided if we had some real-time scheduling that someone can look on their phone, on the website and say, this field's reserved, this field's closed, this field's open, come and go as you please. And so the other issue is, is some, the fees. I know there's been a fee schedule for a while. It's kind of been discretionary and now it's starting to get implemented. My kids have played travel baseball for four or five years. We've never been asked to pay fields for, to use tax, or fields that we pay taxes on. A lot of taxes that we pay as property owners around here. And it's just in the future been, been happening. And so it's at fifty dollars an hour, I think is the fee schedule right now. These kids practice three hours a week for forty-four weeks out of the year. That's sixty-six hundred dollars a year. Divide that by ten. Usually it's about ten players a team, six hundred and sixty dollars a family. Really makes a difference between whether or not some of these families can afford it. And it's expensive already, believe me, bats and gloves and traveling. So having, we'd like to see something set up where some of these fields that require low maintenance are open and they are first come, first served. If you want to have some of the other fields reserved, that's great. We don't have a problem paying fees. It would just be nice to know when we're going to get charged and when we're not going to get charged. And see some kind of structure where like Brownwood and some of these other cities have specific set fees for travel teams for six months out of the year. And so like a three hundred dollar fee for six months, that's thirty bucks a kid for the whole season, completely reasonable. that's thirty bucks a kid for the whole season, completely reasonable, no problem. We don't really want to pay for it, obviously, we pay taxes, but we understand that. Um, so, you know, I would like to, you know, ask, ask Councilman Reisman, um, to add this to the agenda of the next committee meeting. I'd love to talk with you, with other employees, some ideas. But I mean, really the organization, I mean, in the legal field, scheduling hearings, scheduling mediations, every single non-technology oriented person like myself has websites where you can go on and schedule this stuff, and it's real time. The, the technology is easy, and it's available, it's cheap. There's no reason the park shouldn't have that. And it would clear up those issues of any kind of discrepancies about misunderstandings of what's open and what's not, and we can avoid people and family, um, getting yelled at and, and some issues like that. Um, but there's a lot of things I'd like to discuss, uh, about that, and, you know, again, we're one of the only families that has kids on two different organizations, and, uh, it's pretty apparent with some of the stuff that's been going on that one of my kids is treated differently than the other kid. And so my wife and I have really noticed that, and that's, that's concerning. And so like to just have a, you know, the committee's ear and, and discuss some of these things that can make everything more transparent, more consistent, and make sure that everybody is, is, uh, getting treated fairly from that standpoint, and that, um, all the kids have the same equal opportunities. So appreciate your time tonight, and I appreciate your considerations.
Thank you, Stephen. What I'm going to do is I'm going to ask, uh, Lon to reach out to you and get a meeting with you and discuss this, and then he and Jason can have a conversation with Darren.
I, I'm going to handle it from the staff level, Mayor, just with.
Okay, thank you.
This is the first I'm hearing of it.
Thank you.
I think Lon's been asked to have it. On the committee, so I think it'd be appropriate to do that. Next item is Community Resource Paramedic Update. I guess that's going to be our chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Thank you, sir.
Good to see you back.
I feel great, it's good to be back, good to be seen.
We started a program in twenty twenty-two, uh, Community Resource Paramedic. Its original intention was to address low acuity, non-emergent calls that were being taken by our emergency services. And we implemented that, and it was very suc- successful. It dramatically reduced the instances of those low emergent calls on the emergency system. We would enroll citizens into the program, educate them on their health care and management of their health care, and graduate them out in a, in a short period of time to where they didn't rely on an ambulance in the emergency room for their health care. After dramatically reducing those numbers, we kind of broadened that into a higher emergent care because our Community Resource Paramedic is a critical care paramedic. It's a higher level of training. And they started addressing high, uh, emergent, or really acute calls. We started adding equipment and treatment protocols, and we've done amazing work. Along the way, Eret County joined us, and they're here with us tonight. Got a mirrored program. It just so happens they've got a critical care medic that's got experience, just like we've got a critical care medic with experience in flight. Uh, and we're able to duplicate those services, and we're saving lives that would not have been saved before this program came along. We've incorporated, uh, sonography. We can do sonograms in the back of the ambulance to, to, to see internal bleeding that we couldn't see before. Uh, we've got an advanced ventilator that we didn't have before. We now carry blood, and we can do blood transfusions in the field. We're on the, just on the doorsteps of being able to do lab work. Uh, we've got a lab analyzer. Uh, to be able to do the lab work, I, I'll tell you, the, the hoops you have to jump through to do that to be accredited to be able to do lab work in the field is, is pretty significant. It's more significant than anything else we do in licensing. Uh, and, but we're almost there, and we will be doing lab work in the field to be able to determine exactly the status of patients, uh, that are in critical need. Uh, we have really, I'm going to count Colby as one of ours. Colby Swearingen is with Eret County.
He was there that night with me.
So we've got three critical care paramedics. Colby Swearingen, Stephen Jacobson, Brandon Sellers, our newest lieutenant, uh, are critical care medics. We're training others to be critical care because we're seeing such success in this program. Uh, but more than, more than anything, the lives that are being saved, I wanted to bring up, uh, Stephen Jacobson, to let him tell you a little more about the program and some of the equipment that we're carrying, and he can, uh, maybe bring home the importance.
You heard I was going to beg, so you brought all your stuff with you.
Well, we try to keep it accessible.
There you go.
Well, thank you all for, for this opportunity. It's about a little more than two years ago I was up here. We were just presenting the, the community health side of it, but before I knew this was really, uh, uh, you know, really conceived, so, uh, as Chief had mentioned, we, we're really proud of the, the care that we're able to provide. Um, you know, communities of our size and many larger don't have the capabilities that our EMS, uh, has here. So this is a big deal for us, and, uh, we're extremely proud and grateful for all the support that we've gotten from the city government, from the, from the community, from our EMS medical director. It all, everything plays a part in making this happen, so. So really, a lot of this equipment here you would find in the emergency room at, at the hospital. Traditionally, if, in communities that don't have, uh, programs that are to the, to the extent that we do, they, uh, you know, everybody starts IVs, everybody can give, um, basic medications as far as paramedics. Everybody can do, eat, read EKGs and things like that. To be able to go a step further and bring some of that emergency room equipment into the field really helps to make a difference in patients that don't really have time to spare. So primarily, those are, uh, major trauma patients, patients who have lost a lot of blood, uh, patients who are pregnant in high-risk pregnancies, and, uh, you know, other kinds of conditions where it's very time, time-sensitive. And, uh, so some of the stuff here, it's, it's pretty remarkable how, how small the, all of these things can be. So using just a regular iPad, we are able to take our ultrasound probe, which is this big. A machine at the hospital rolls around on a cart that can perform a lot of the same actions. Now, this isn't as detailed as that is, but we don't need to see tendons and ligaments and all that. But all we do is we plug this in, squirt a little bit of the gel on there. We can scan an abdomen, we can find, uh, a liver that's like a lacerated liver, we can find lacerated spleens. Uh, we can find any kind of free-floating, or free-fluid in the abdomen, which was usually blood. We can use it to find collapsed lungs, we can use it to find if there's fluid around the heart. And while a lot of this doesn't seem like it's, uh, makes a big difference, it, it absolutely does. This, the, traditionally, if you had a patient who was in cardiac arrest, we were at the mercy of either a quick, uh, transport to the hospital or being able to figure out what you can in the field with just really strong guesswork, essentially. With these tools, primarily with ultrasound, we can now identify someone with a collapsed lung, someone with fluid around their heart, someone that's bleeding in their abdomen, and we can work proactively to create, to correct those things and take out a lot of the, the guesswork. So the ultrasound is something we've had for quite a while, uh, for at least a couple of years, and, we, we use it fairly, fairly often, and it's made a pretty profound difference in establishing if patients can go here or if they need to fly on a, on a helicopter. The other thing that Chief had mentioned was our, uh, lab testing equipment. So at the hospital, if you've, if you've ever seen, if you've ever had to give blood there, get blood drawn, it's a massive operation that they have there, they can test just about anything. Oh, we don't have all those same capabilities, but with just a few pieces of equipment, we're able to see, uh, many of the, the critical labs. So this piece of equipment here, this is called the EPOC. It's a self-contained unit that uses this card right here. Push the card in, it will, it takes a little bit of time to, to activate, but once it's ready to receive blood, it takes a small amount of blood, something that we can, uh, use from an IV after we've started one. You put it in the machine, in about five minutes, it gives you twenty-three different lab values. So it's, it's pretty incredible, we can, we'll know status of, you know, how much sodium you have in your body, how much potassium, if you have an infection, if your, uh, you know, if your body is working harder than it needs to be, they'll, those are all signs that will tell us, you know, to redirect our, our care, what we need to do. So like Chief was saying, this piece of equipment here is, uh, extremely rare to find in a pre-hospital environment, especially in our, in a community our size. And it has been, uh, and it's with good reason. This has been a very laborious process, uh, having to jump through a whole bunch of regulatory processes, and, uh, it's, but it's, it's totally worth it. In about June, we're hoping in June we should have this live. Uh, it's, we've been, we started the process in September, and, uh, it's, we know it's going to make a huge difference. It's such a profound difference that we, the, we expect that we're going to be, uh, have improvements in cardiac arrest, uh, survivability, as well as identifying, uh, infection, sepsis, things like that earlier, and improving patient outcomes in that sense. And this has a little printer along with it, so we can print out the results, hand it to a flight, hand it to an ER physician, and they cut down the, the level of time it takes to get lab values by probably, uh, ten or fifteen minutes. Last thing here is our fancy new cooler. So in this cooler is where we keep our blood. So two units of human O positive blood at all times, and it itself has a very stringent regulatory process that goes along with it. We are carrying blood, uh, Colby at Eret County also carries two units of blood, and, uh, together we've administered blood a total of, of three times. So, uh, we started this program back in, uh, August. Our first usage was in December. Uh, both, uh, patients that we've administered to, this blood to were major trauma patients. Uh, our first gentleman was a, had received a gunshot, gunshot wound to the chest, uh, was very unstable, uh, had collapsed lung. We are able to use some of our tools to identify these things. We were able to start administering blood right away, and, uh, he went from being very unstable and not, uh, very conscious to by the time we got him into the back of the ambulance, we were having to give him pain medicine because he was so conscious to, uh, help him, help us get through the rest of these procedures. Uh, most notably, uh, uh, last weekend, uh, Eret County EMS and, uh, and Steevenville responded to a, uh, victim of a stabbing. Uh, this patient was found in cardiac arrest. Uh, the police officers that responded first made quick work of stabilizing the patient, controlling major bleeding, and starting CPR. That laid the, a strong foundation for us to come in and administer blood. Colby administered two units of blood on scene. By the time they got the patient to the, uh, helo, the helicopter landing zone, the patient was awake, and, uh, we administered some more blood on scene, he got more blood in route, and went to surgery. This patient was in cardiac arrest. Traumatic cardiac arrests have a survivability of less than ten percent at best. You're looking between one to ten percent. This patient left the, was discharged from the trauma ICU at JPS home without rehab, without anything else. And it's, that is a testament to the early administration of blood. So this is our most impactful tool that we have right now. And, uh, we know that with the addition of our lab testing capabilities, we're going to be identifying more patients that, uh, that would have slipped through the cracks otherwise that we can give this blood to. So this is a, it's a big deal for us. Again, we're extremely proud to be offering these things, and, uh, we hope to continue to add more and more stuff to our arsenal of, of, uh, things that we can do to help people, so.
Questions for Chief?
And just to, just to jump in and tag in on this, less than two hundred agencies, ground ambulances are carrying blood, is that correct?
Correct.
In the United States. So we're one, Eret County, Steevenville. Very, very few in the United States that are administering this. In the case that happened this past weekend where Colby made the scene and started the blood administration, that case has been picked up nationally as something that does not occur. Traumatic full arrest is brought back, but because of the, uh, initiation and procedures, uh, this man is alive. Uh, it's just incredible work. I, I could be more proud of what these guys are doing, uh, in the field, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments?
I'm curious, your, your blood testing equipment, does it detect changes in enzymes that help to diagnose various problems?
It, most of the enzymes, it's, it, it, not yet. So there's, uh, the cardiac enzymes that are traditionally tested for, uh, identifying like, uh, heart attacks. It doesn't have that capability yet, it's, it's in the works, but currently it's just electrolytes, uh, blood gases, uh, lactate, it's just, but nothing cardiac-specific yet.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have a question, I just have a statement. We're very thankful to have y'all. So thank you very much for all you do and your expertise, and we appreciate everything y'all do.
Thank you.
I don't know who stuck me that night with, I started the IV, but whoever it was that needed to go to the hospital, I was, in the last six weeks I've had more IVs than I can count, and whatever it was, I never felt it. Now, probably, probably that was because I was, you know, a little bit not lucid that night, was I? I was a little bit wild that night, I think. But I appreciate, I mean, so you got to go to the emergency room and do some teaching there, it's.
We'll let them know.
Cause I got some IVs stuck there too, and I, I looked at the nurse and I said, you know what, I, I hurt people who hurt me. You know, and she laughed and walked away.
Anybody else?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Last night I, I had the opportunity to, uh, hear some reports. Uh, five of them actually, uh, of, uh, students from different parts of Texas that, uh, talked about rural health care and emergency services. And they were talking primarily because of where they came from. And some of them were talking about and how that they were literally, you know, forty miles, fifty miles, sixty miles from the nearest EMS service their families were, and so forth. And this is, what you're saying here and what you've presented shows us how fortunate that we are, that we have people like you here, uh, that's thinking ahead and doing these kind of things to make sure we're in a rural area too. But thank goodness we have, uh, high-quality professionals here uh, that are making these techniques available to people in trouble here. It's not like that everywhere, and, uh, and everything. Hopefully it will be someday, but it's not right now, and we need to remember that, that we've got, uh, such good service here. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just last week, I think a couple of more, I had a friend over at Litree that, again, I had to call EMS on last week, and did a tremendous job of getting him to the emergency room. And it was a very difficult situation, and I thought they handled it about as professionally as you could ever hope for.
Anybody else? Thank you, thank you very much, thanks Chief.
Thank you.
Both Chiefs. Y'all noticed on his jersey it's Chief EMS. Y'all call him Chief or are you called by his first name?
Always Chief.
Always Chief. Nothing else besides Chief, huh?
Stevo.
Stevo? Okay. I get, next item is adopting revision to the residential incentive program. Jason, is that you? It'll be Steve that does that.
Steve.
Steve. Well, you got a big part of the agenda tonight, Steve.
Well, trying to stay true to form with you coming back, Mayor.
I'm back.
Yeah, good to see you.
Appreciate you.
Use more evidence that prayer works.
It does, thank you very much. Had hundreds of that going on.
So good to see you. Uh, Mayor, Council, we, uh, over the past couple of months met with the Development Services Committee and looked at our residential incentive program that was actually adopted back in twenty twenty and then revised in twenty twenty-one. There were a few things that, uh, we discussed over the past couple of months, and we came back tonight with, uh, with the revisions for your review. Uh, in essence, those revisions included one word change, um, some typos that Councilman Cook pointed out that I haven't seen after three or four years of reading this. And then, uh, we did raise the qualifying criteria from a two-hundred-thousand-dollar, uh, limit. And then we did raise the qualifying criteria from a $200,000 limit on the property value to $250,000. So that will broaden the net a little bit and hopefully allow more people to participate. Assuming this passes tonight, then one action item that staff was given is to make sure that we get this out on social media. So I've worked with, I've asked Sarah to help us with that and IT. And we're going to be trying to get that out as quickly as possible, hopefully in the next few days. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve?
Just as a comment, because we've discussed this on two different meetings and everything, the overall, the overall program, this raises it to 250,000. And I think that David is the one that had mentioned the fact that there's very few homes that would qualify for it, that are 200,000 or under. And so we, by raising it to 250,000, it still keeps the, the still home has to be about 20 years old. It has to be, the minimum investment is still 20,000. And that 10,000 of that must be related to exterior. And then this program will provide up to $5,000 to the applicant after the fact as reimbursement for this, for improving the homes. Ideally, it improves the value of the home and, and, which makes it by that more valuable, a better place to live and so forth. So we're hopefully rehabbing some existing facilities in our will in the future. It has a $50,000 budget figure, excuse me, $25,000 budget figure that is set aside for it that will allow us to do approximately five of those per year if you take full of full amount. So right now, we're not doing anywhere near that many.
No, sir.
So hopefully, this will make it work. And with that, I would move that we.
Have a motion here, second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. I'm writing it real slowly nowadays, just kind of scribbled looking. Have a motion, a second. Further discussion?
What was the motion?
To approve the revised revision to the residential incentive program policy as presented by Steve.
Got you.
That's good. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, consider, I'm gonna turn over to Jason to talk about annexation.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the next couple of items do deal with annexation. Not something we do a lot anymore these days. The first one is to, staff is requesting authorization from council to notify Fort Worth and Western Railroad of our intent to annex a piece of the railroad. It's the section out behind where Atwood's Prime or Amazon and that area is. It is in relation to an economic development project on the backside of railroad where a piece of property wants to be annexed into the city, but at present, they're not contiguous. And so by taking in the railroad, that'll then make them contiguous. Mr. Killen has been working with both the new property owner that wants to be in the city and coordinating with the railroad as well. And so we're simply asking to start that process and notify Fort Worth and Western. This works a little different than the normal voluntary annexations we do. The timeline's a little longer. State law in this instance, it'll be no less than 61 days from when we provide that notice. And there is no public hearing with this one like there is with normal voluntary annexation. And with that, I'll.
Questions for Jason? Hearing none, then I'll make the motion to consider, to authorize the city manager to notify a registered agent, the Fort Worth and Western Railroad Company of the city's intent to annex a portion of the railroad northeast of Highway eight and Highway 281 from the city limits line at CR 177 to the northern city limits line percent to the powers granted by Section 43 dot 1056 of the local government code. Do I hear a second? Have a motion, a second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, consider annexation of city-owned property parcels. Is that you, Jason, or is it gonna be Steve?
No, I'll take care of this one.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if you'll remember, we purchased some parcels at the bottom end of the runway so that we could complete the expansion project that we've been working on for several years.
Decades.
Those parcels are outside of the city limits. They're now owned by the city, but they're outside. As we complete or go through the expansion project and kind of replat that land as it becomes part of the airport, it would look a little weird because it will become one big parcel and part of it's within the corporate limits, part of it's not. So staff is asking permission for the city to voluntarily annex its own land.
Questions for Jason? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to consider authorizing the city manager initiated annexation of city-owned properties, parcel R 78 439, portion of R 28 648, and R 24340. Do I hear a second? Have a motion and a second. More discussion? And someone's gonna discuss a question?
Clearance through.
Just clearance through. I do that a lot. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Killen, just punch yourself up there for a while.
Well, I was hoping to have the biggest part of the agenda tonight.
Well, you do.
This is permit for 20, RZ 2025 dash 008. The applicant is Mr. Joel Allen. He is here with us tonight. He's representing Pecan Landing LLC and asking for a rezone of property at Zero Forest Lane, which is parcel 77510. It's 36 acres in the Motley William abstract. This property, you may recall, was rezoned to a planned development back in 2023. Mr. Allen's been working with the city since that time, and his site plan has experienced quite a bit of revision or evolution, I guess, as we get into the drainage studies and things of that nature. And so with this change in his site plan, he's decided that a straight zoning may be the best approach. And so he's asking for a rezone from a planned development to R 2.5, which allows for a smaller lot dimension that would allow for single-family homes, duplexes, townhomes. We don't have specifically yet a site plan to know exactly what the plan will be or what he will move forward with, but it's going to be very similar to his PD. And what this does is just allows him to have a little more latitude and be a little more fluid in what he offers to the, the public through that development. The, on March 19th, 2025, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request and by a vote of three to two, recommended the city council approve the rezone request. However, if we look at our rules of procedure for the Planning and Zoning Commission, it requires a two-third vote to move forward with a favorable recommendation. So in essence, that, that vote did not result in a favorable recommendation. But what it does do is move forward to the city council without a recommendation. So needed to make that clarification, and I have discussed that with Mr. Allen prior to tonight's meeting. So with that, Mr. Mayor, this request is for a rezone to R 2.5. Mr. Allen is here if we have any questions, and of course, I'd be glad to ask, answer any questions.
Mr. Killen, is this a rezone of the entire property? Is that correct?
This is for the 36-acre parcel that was rezoned in 2023 to planned development. That is correct.
Okay, it was all a PD.
Yes, sir.
And now we're rezoning from PD to R 2.5?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for Steve? Hearing none, we'll enter into a public hearing on case number RZ 2025 dash 008. Anyone want to come speak in favor or opposition to the proposal? You want to speak, Joel?
Sure.
Could you give your name and your address?
Sure. Joel Allen, private road 1082. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's good to see you all. Thank you all for how you serve this city and your leadership. I just want to underscore that we are working vigorously to provide housing for the citizens of Stevensville, and that is our goal. As you know, there is a shortage, and there is a positive trickle effect when we do get rooftops. We actually have a comprehensive plan to incorporate some retail into the south end of this adjacent parcel. We will, we have a site plan that is, that is moving around, but I think it would be very favorable for the city, very similar to what we see at Washington Commons. And so that is our goal, is to, is to bring housing as soon as possible and develop not only this site, but the adjacent parcels in the vicinity. And I would just like to mention that the change from the PD, we did have a, a change in product type, and we added some land to it. So that, that was a little additional color for why we wanted to go straight-line zoning. We feel like the straight-line zoning will help us achieve our, our desired plan. With that, I would request your vote for the.
Any questions for Joel?
Do you know about how many units you're trying to fit in 37, or is it still up to your plan?
It's still, it's still moving around quite a bit, but somewhere in the vicinity of 150. It depends on the zoning that we, that we get.
I understand, yes.
Yep.
Any other questions for Joel? Hearing none, I'll consider an ordinance 2025 zero dash 12. Is that correct? Sarah?
Um, yes, but can you close the public?
I need to close the public hearing? Is there anybody else who wants to speak in favor or in opposition to the plan? I'll close the public hearing and consider approval of, a motion for approval of the ordinance, rezoning property located at Forest Lane, parcel R 77510, being 36.765 acres of the AO, A 0515 Motley William abstract of the city of Stevensville, Ereth County, Texas, from planned development to integrated housing, R 2.5. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I would make the motion to authorize the rezone of parcel 077510 and approve ordinance 2025 dash 012.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Steve?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, next application is Mr. Joel Allen, again, representing Pecan Landing LLC. He's requesting a rezone of property on Zero Forest. This is a parcel directly across the street from the, the last parcel that we acted on. This is parcel R 78517. It's 7.35 acres of the Motley William abstract. He is asking for a rezone from single-family to R 2.5 integrated housing. Again, this will be a, a development in conjunction with the 36 acres that we just discussed. Planning and Zoning Commission convened on March 19th, 2025, and by a vote of four to one, recommended the city council approve the rezone request. And with that, be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve?
Mr. Killen, just for clarification's sake, this was not a part of the PD that, that was originally planned, is that correct?
That is correct. Separate parcel that I believe Mr. Allen just brought into his inventory in the past maybe 30 to 60 days.
Okay, but the R 2.5 gives more flexibility, maybe the right word, than, than a PD does for the development of a specific parcel?
Yes, sir. Plan development would give some pretty specific guidelines from the developer on what the project would look like. Also allows the city council to give the developer some expectations on the, on the planned development. This parcel, however, though, was never part of the original PD, to your point. So it's just a separate parcel that he's picked up and, and I believe is intending to move forward at about the same pathway as he's looking at on the 36 acres.
But having uniform zoning in the two would certainly be an asset, I would think, for the developer and for the development itself.
Yes, sir. This R 2.5 zoning provides a little more flexibility, using your, your term, on lot size, lot dimension, and size of home. And again, it does allow for single-family homes, duplexes, and townhomes. So a little, little room to negotiate on, on what he does with the development once the, the R 2.5 zoning is approved, if so approved.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
More questions for Steve?
This is contiguous with the other land, correct?
It's separated by forest, but basically directly across from forest.
It's on the other side of Nathan Bed, the forest lane.
Okay, hearing no other questions, we'll enter into a public hearing to repeal ordinance number 2023 008.
No. Sorry.
Is that correct? It's?
Case number RZ 2025 dash 00.
013, okay, thank you. Well, I hear it says repeal ordinance on the agenda, 2023 008.
That's going to be.
That's the next item.
Mayor, 2024 dash 018 is the, I believe, the one that we're asking that we repeal. Right now, we're acting on the seven acres, which is a rezone. So it is a little out of, probably could have been in a different order to make it a little easier to follow.
It's following agenda. All right, so we'll enter into a public hearing on case number RZ 2025 dash 009, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Enter a public hearing. Does anybody want to speak in favor of the proposal? You have an opportunity, if you want to. You don't have to.
Well, I would just point out that when we went through the civil review, one of the things that we're always trying to be cognizant of is water and drainage. Picking up this parcel across the road is going to really help us with that, help us with our drainage plan, so.
Questions for Joel? Okay, at this point, we'll consider approval of ordinance rezoning property located at Forest Lane.
Mayor.
We've got to close the public hearing. There we go. If no one else wants to speak in favor or opposition, then we'll close it. Parcel is R 78 517, is that a correct one now? Following agenda again, being 70.35 acres of the Motley William abstract. Do I hear a motion?
Well, Mayor, I'd make the motion to rezone parcel 78517 to R 2.5 as requested and approve ordinance 2025 dash 013.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, Steve. Which item are we on now? Give me a number 13.
Um, is it 13, sir?
Yes.
Thank you for that.
It is number 13, sir.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Uh, this one is PD 2024 dash 018, and it's related to that very first one. That was the RZ 008 for the 36 acres. And with the, the action taken by council to do the, to actually approve the rezone request, Mr. Allen is requesting that the PD that was originally approved in 2023 be repealed. So this is basically some housecleaning to repeal the ordinance that was passed in 2023, which is ordinance 2023 dash 0 dash 08. That established the planned development, and we're simply asking for consideration to repeal that, that particular ordinance.
So we're on item 13 right now, according to 14, okay. Questions for Steve? Hearing none, we'll be entering into a public hearing on the repeal of ordinance number 2023 0 dash 08, O dash 08. Anybody want to speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Hearing seen none, we'll close the public hearing and consider approval of the ordinance repealing.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve ordinance number 2025 0 dash 14, which is the repeal of ordinance 2023 dash 0 dash 08.
Have a motion, do I hear a second? Did you, Alan?
Second, yes.
I have my hearing aids on now, it kind of echoes on both sides. You know how that is, Alan, when we get old, right?
Not as old as you, though.
I know I'm not. Okay, next item, Steve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, Mayor, last one for us tonight, and this is application from Mr. Keith Dowell. It's RZ 2025 dash 010. He's asking for a rezone of 975 North McCart, which is parcel R 28762 of the Butler Addition to the city of Stevensville. The, this, this project, what Mr. Dowell has in mind is it's a, it's a large lot for this area, and he is asking that this property be rezoned so that he can basically replat this into a two-lot subdivision. He will retain the, the single-family home that is currently on the property and then create a flag-shaped lot that will have 40-foot. create a flag shaped lot that will have forty foot of frontage on McCart, uh, but allow for construction of, um, what he is looking at, probably a four unit building on the backside of that flag shaped lot. So it would basically divide the existing parcel into two separate lots, uh, keeping the single family home and allowing for the construction of a, of a four unit building. Don't know if Mr. Dowell is here with us tonight, but on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, by unanimous vote of five to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that the city council consider or approve the rezone request. With that, Mayor, be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Steve?
Mr. Killen, is he, is his intent to replat this or leave it as a single flat?
He'll replat it.
He'll replat it?
Two, two separate lots, yes, sir.
Will there be access off of McCart?
Yes, sir, he'll, the, uh, the lot has a large enough frontage on McCart that he can meet the minimum lot dimension for the single family house that currently exists on the property and still have that forty foot of frontage for the flag shaped lot, uh, on the remainder of the parcel. Yes, sir.
Other questions for Steve?
Just out of curiosity, Steve, on this, when we separate it out and replat it, and he builds these units, will that be, uh, sidewalked and curving gutter?
Will it be, I'm sorry?
Will we require a sidewalk and curving gutter?
Yes, sir, the, once he does the replat, that will trigger, um, those requirements. Yes, sir.
Other questions for Steve? Hearing none, we'll enter into a public hearing on case number R Z twenty twenty-five dash zero ten. Anybody want to come speak in favor or in opposition to the request? Hearing seen none, we'll close the public hearing and consider approval of ordinance rezoning property located at nine seven five North McCart, parcel R twenty-eight seven six two, being block two, lot five of the S twenty-three hundred Butler addition to the City of Stevenville, Eretown County, from single family R one to integrated housing R two point five. Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, go ahead.
Go ahead, Dave.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Age before the idiot here.
Well. There you go, Alan.
Thanks.
I wasn't on that one, but I'll, I'll.
Yeah, you paid him to do that.
That's right, I did, he's gonna get a cupcake here.
Mayor, I'm, I make the motion to approve the rezone of parcel seven two eight seven six two and authorize the approval of ordinance number two zero two five O dash one five.
Have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I want to make a comment if I could.
Get after it.
I'm not going to comment on your age, but.
Thank you very much. You said you'd be nice to be tonight.
Mr. Killen, I, you know that I struggle with two point five zoning, especially in these infill neighborhoods because of, to me, it, it's not always appropriate because of the surrounding housing and other things. I appreciate the additional maps that you have provided because that makes it so much easier for me to understand. And after driving by there, the, the property adjacent to this has what on it? It has apartments on it. It's a perfect fit for that, uh, and for what he, his intended use is, is a good fit for that large lot because it's, it's difficult to develop it in any other way. So two point five has benefits, but I think we need to be really careful with it. Mr. Allen's development out there where he's starting with a blank slate can, two point five is great for that because he can put so many things in there, but some of the others, we need, this is just my commentary, we need to be cautious with it, uh, on some of the older neighborhoods especially, but this is a case where it fits well and it will add to the neighborhood significantly, I believe. But thank you for your work.
Yes, sir. I have to give credit to Sarah, she, she allowed me to add a few maps in at last minute today, so.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Have a motion and a second? Go to vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor, thank Council.
And that's all you have, Steve?
That's it, sir.
Oh, my gracious. Matty, nominations committee?
Yes, sir, the nominations committee met on March eighteenth to review the nomination , or, so a few board positions that we had open. Um, the first one that is quick to, we had a, planning and zoning place seven was open, so we made the motion to move alternate one, James Stevenson from alternate one to place seven to fulfill the planning and zoning commission board. So would that like to make a motion to approve the movement of James Stevenson from alternate one to place seven on the planning and zoning.
Is that the only one you have for tonight?
Uh, well, I have Main Street, but we're not voting on Main Street.
Okay. So have a motion, Mayor, a second? Motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye? Motion passes.
The next board we addressed was the Main Street Advisory Board, we had someone roll off, um, we did have an applicant, Ms. Bell Dowell. Uh, Ms. Bell Dowell is a resident of Eretown County and currently, as our ordinance reads, the board has to have five members living in the city and then two in the county. Currently, the board already has two county members sitting, um, so we were not able to sit Ms. Dowell on the board at this time, but we did make a recommendation to review the ordinance at a later date, um, to address just this issue. And that is all for the nominations committee.
Ma'am, is Monica here? Monica's report is kind of like going to the tax accountant, sign your tax form, tax Did you sign yours? You done? You enjoy her report?
I enjoyed hers.
There you go.
Thank you. Good to see you back, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Council members, um, this is our budget report for the period ending February twenty-eight, um, so we are five months into our fiscal year. Uh, things are about, uh, where we would anticipate. So for the property tax, um, we received a hundred and fifty-three thousand in property tax, um, which resulted in three hundred and ninety-two thousand increase over the funds collected last fiscal, fiscal year to date. As you can see on the, uh, chart, uh, December and January are our biggest months, uh, because the taxes are due, um, by January thirty-first in order not to be delinquent. We've collected ninety-seven percent of our seven point eight million dollar budget, that's about seven hun, uh, seventy-nine thousand more than we anticipated, um, at this time. We've received nine hundred and ninety-three thousand in sales tax in February. Just knowing on the chart, as you can see, February is one of our biggest months because we get the money in February, that's from your Christmas sales from your December. That resulted in fifty-two thousand or one percent more than the funds collected last fiscal year to date. Um, we're at forty-six percent of our budget, and that's about a hundred and forty-two thousand higher than we would have anticipated. We've spent twenty-four point four million in revenue, uh, I'm sorry, we received twenty-four point four million in revenue, and the bulk of that was in our general fund at sixty-three percent, um, largely due to the property taxes coming in and the sales tax. And then the revenue was at twenty-two percent, and that has to do with a lot of our, um, charges for services. We've received fifty-four percent of our total budgeted revenue through Feb, February, which is one point seven million more than anticipated, and that's due to taxes, licensing and permits, interest in our other revenue. We've received two point six million more, uh, revenue in February than last fiscal year to date, and that's due to taxes, license and permits and our charges for services. We've spent twenty-one and a half million to date, um, forty-four percent of that was in the general fund, thirty-five percent of that was in the wastewater fund, and then we had, uh, four percent in storm and debt service, capital projects, our TIF fund. Um, with the debt service, the storm and the capital projects, a lot of that relates to our debt service because one of our payments, February is one of our payment months. We've expended thirty-five percent of our total budgeted expenditures through February, that's five point four million less than anticipated. That's due to personnel contractual, um, capital outlay and some grant disbursements. We spent one million more, um, than last fiscal year to date, and that's due to personnel and equipment maintenance. Moving on to CETA, they've received an overall forty-six percent of their budgeted revenue, which is, um, eleven thousand less than last fiscal year to date and thirteen thousand more than anticipated, and that's due to taxes. They've spent an overall twenty-nine percent of their, um, expenditures through February, that's a hundred and six thousand more than last fiscal year to date due to personnel and capital outlay, and a hundred and twenty-eight thousand less than anticipated, and that's due to contractual capital outlay and grant disbursements. Any questions?
Questions for Monica? Thank you, ma'am. Council, I know that, I don't want any clapping, but Jeff's not here tonight, so there's no history lesson coming to us. Don't, don't do that, Alan. I see you, want to clap, I don't, I understand, I told him I'd give him a hard time, but he's in, at Dallas at a conference right now on housing. Well, next move, item is a consent agenda, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion and a second, discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. My next agenda here. Comments by city manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, this Friday evening, uh, Main Street program has alley bingo scheduled downtown, and then Saturday, the first, or Farmer's Market, uh, this first Saturday, so just wanted to remind everybody of that, but also, those are starting to get a little bit up in the air with the way the weather's shaping up the rest of the week, uh, so staff's paying attention to the weather and they'll expect to make any modifications or cancellations in the next day or so, uh, so people have plenty of time. On February, excuse me, April fourteenth, uh, is a public meeting at the airport, uh, at the terminal building, that's part of the update to the airport, uh, layout plan that we're having to do as part of the expansion, uh, so we'd encourage anybody that wants to know about what's going on with the airport.
And that's how much should we get from the government finally, pay for that land?
We had? Uh, we would reimburse six, six hundred and something.
Six hundred and ninety?
Yeah. Thousand, so.
Thanks for helping work on that.
Yes, sir. Uh, so that's on February fourteenth, and then, all right, I don't like you saying February, combined with time, April fourteenth, and then, uh, April eighteenth, that Friday, city offices will be closed in observance of Good Friday, and that's all I have for you. Welcome back.
Thank you, sir. Gerald?
Welcome back, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Glad you're here.
Welcome back, Mayor, we're glad you're here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sir.
Welcome back, Mayor, we're happy to have you back. Stuck between two eagles here, so.
That's okay, hug Alan. He's leaning back.
I've got a, a salt list here, so, um, I'd like to congratulate Michael Parsons, these smell amazing, and I can't wait to try one when we go back to executive session, um, congratulations on his hard work and dedication to his, his passion and craft, uh, we truly are the city of champions, and it shows all the way from, from that to our athletics department and our education department as well. Uh, wish the Honeybee's good luck tonight as they play for the regional finals. They're at Mansfield, I believe, at seven o'clock, and they're playing Waco. Don't give me the line, I'm not gonna lie to you.
Walk statue.
Walk statue lot, that's it. Um, so also, registration is now underway for mother-son mayhem at the city park, that will be held, that will be held on May fifth. Uh, the cost is forty dollars for mother-son and ten dollars for each additional child after that. Um, the youth summer track and field registration is also going on now through April thirtieth, um, and that registration fee is seventy-five dollars. Uh, April is nine one one education month, uh, the police department is, asked, we asked that we, uh, only call or text nine one one in case of emergency. Please always know your location, stay calm and answer all questions that you're given, and please talk to your children about emergency plans and make sure that they know their address even at a young age, because that's very important. If they, you have an emergency and they make that phone call, they need to know how to tell them where you are. Um, April first is, or April is also Sexual Assault and Child Abuse Awareness Month. Laura Gambino was here earlier giving us a rundown of the Stop the, or Stop the Silence awareness rally that's happening on April twenty-ninth at the Eretown County Courthouse at six P M. Um, Cars with Coffee and the Farmer's Market is this weekend, and what we just spoke with Mr. King about the weather, so we'll keep that on the radar. And then the city is also doing Memorial Day banners, the Main Street, we did it last year, there's twelve banners that hang up around the square for the month of May, um, and they are to honor your loved ones that have fallen during their time of service. Um, those are free. You can ask for more information or register for your loved one to be a recipient of one of those banners by contacting, uh, the Main Street office here at City Hall, and that's Um, and that's very important to our community, and we appreciate people who put that together for us. And with that, that is everything I have.
David, you take your.
Matty took all my notes, I don't know what happened. Welcome back, Mayor.
Yes, welcome back, Mr. Mayor, glad to have you back.
Alan?
I'm gonna say it again, welcome back, bud.
Appreciate you.
Uh, David did a good job while you were gone, but the, the chair is yours, you belong in it, thank you very much.
Appreciate you. Dinner you bought was great, too.
I want to, I want to brag on some of our young people. Stevenville High School has a robotics team. My grandson, Cash Garner, is on that robotics team. They're competing for the state championship this coming weekend in Houston. Uh, it's, it's U I L competition, it's, it's a significant achievement to be able to make it because not all teams get to go, it's the playoffs, similar to football, but you go through a series of, of meets and the qualifiers get to go to the state. And I want to brag on them because that's a pretty big achievement for young men and women to be able to, to design, engineer and then demonstrate the things that their robot will do. And I want to brag on them and the teachers and sponsors that keep them going.
Again, I was gonna say thanks to everybody for your prayers, uh, prayers do get answered, don't they? In compliance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Law subchapter D, Government Code Vernon's Texas codes annotated in accordance with section five five one dot oh seven one, consultation with attorney, we're going to recess to executive session, we'll be back. And by the way, I'm gonna leave these here so anybody.